Uh.
Uh.
So good.
Right?
You guys ready?
Yeah.
You can hit that to do.
Good morning, um, this is the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. We are streaming this on the RBC YouTube channel. I'm calling this meeting to order at eleven o'clock and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you are requested to limit your comments to three minutes per member or five minutes per group. The public comment time is not for questions and answers. It is your time to express your views. To ensure there is adequate public comment time, please provide your name, contact information, and sorry, and any affiliation prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant at nine seven zero eight seven eight nine five seven five. If you would like to submit written comment, please contact the board assistant. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name, contact information, and any affiliation for the record. Uh, we'll start within the room first. Do you have anything? No public comment, are you? Okay. Uh, any online? I don't see that we even have anybody online besides us. This is a tentative agenda which includes all information available as of October eighth, twenty twenty five. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the RBC historic courthouse, five 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 Main Street, Meker, Colorado, and at the Rangeley Town Hall, two oh nine East Main Street, Rangeley. I would entertain a motion online item D.
Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda for October fourteenth, twenty twenty five without any changes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, Sean, will you please call the roll?
Richfield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Oh, here.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to consent items, line item A.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the consent agenda that consists of the payroll management report for September twenty sixth, payroll management report for October tenth, accounts payable management report for September twenty fifth, meeting minutes for September tenth, meeting minutes for September twenty third, special meeting minutes for September thirtieth, motor vehicle, um, part, let's see, B M V report for September twenty fifth, D H S E B T register and warrant register for September twenty fifth.
A second then.
I have a motion and a second. Anything from either of you on those? John, will you please call the roll?
O'Hairan?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Richfield?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to business, line item A.
Madam Chairman, I'm moved to approve a memorandum of understanding with the powers county manage the administered calls to the hotline county connection center, H C C C, to answer and process child welfare related and A T S related hotline calls on behalf of Rio Blanco County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Um, do you guys have any questions on that?
There's A T S.
Adult.
Is that as close as we can get anybody? They're a long ways away.
Well, actually, it's statewide now, and what they've done is used to be Urban County was responsible for dealing with their own hotline cases where it was on call uh, 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 screening and all of that. So the state developed the, uh, uh, statewide hotline system for child welfare and A P S. So if somebody has referral, they call in, gets logged into the computer, it gets referred back to the appropriate county, and then the case worker, uh, uh, and we have to review those within a certain period of time. Everything's documented and it goes through. It's makes things a lot less messy than they used to be. We don't have as many things going through the press app where the hotline is. Irish County just happens to be the, um, entity that agreed to take all that responsibility.
Good for them. For the people, and it worked, it worked good for us.
Yeah, no, that's good. I just thought that's odd that it's that, that it's down in the corner there, but that's good.
The same one, doesn't matter where.
So they have sixty-four contracts, sixty-three contracts. Okay, I'm good with it.
You know, somebody talked it out. I don't know of anybody that's.
I don't think, I think everybody goes for powers now. And it's only costing us five thousand. I mean, we'll probably pay more than that.
Oh.
Call, so it's saving us money.
And then our quality was on the ball. We wish we had that here.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yes. Wendy and I talked about that. So. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Overton?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
O'Hairan?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Moving on to line item B.
Let's see. So Madam Chair, I would, um, move to approve a change order for the twenty twenty-five chip seal project, increasing contract sum by twenty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and forty cents. This is to address discrepancies identified in the original measurements and associated calculations which have impacted the accuracy of the initial scope.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, and Clint? You're here to answer questions?
I am.
Okay.
You got a question?
You guys have any questions?
Yeah, what are the discrepancies?
Well, it may have been my fault. The printed I F B that was sent out had one line item that was wrong. It was a number track, uh, instead of a seven, they, it was a zero. So it was seven thousand gallons of oil. I should have brought that with me, but it somehow felt to I figured it right, but it just didn't get printed correct. So, um, but with a twenty-five thousand dollars and, uh, they were we're still way under budget.
Is it over the contract?
Yeah, it's over the contract.
And that twenty-five thousand, would that have made a difference on the next? Did someone else bid this? Did you have two bids on this?
It would not. No. The other bid, the I think we had only two bids and it was thirty-three thousand dollars above.
Were the twenty-five still within?
Yes.
And I would guess they were both bidding on the same mistake.
Fortunately, yes.
So I guess the, so is this the company that did County Road Eight?
Yes. United Old Castle Company.
Okay. I will tell you, I'm not thrilled. Isn't there, as you go around a lot of those corners and stuff, there's a lot of places that are missing of the gravel or whatever you put on there for the chip seal?
Yeah, there was.
There's multiple places there that are not smooth. I don't know what it's gonna do for you when it comes time for.
They don't get smoothed up this winter.
How's that? Cause it's in the pavement, right?
The snow piles will even them up.
In the pavement?
Yep.
Really?
Knock the top of the rocks off.
Yes, it scrapes the top of those rocks off. But you're correct that there are a couple of places that, that I noticed that were, uh.
It's not a smooth job by any means.
No, and the seam in the middle
Yeah.
be a little little off. But like you say, most of that's gonna go away after the snowplow season.
I don't understand how that'll work, but I'll watch.
The blade, the blade just cuts the top of the the rocks off. And any high spot, you'll also find, uh, um, like a, a little mound, you know, a small mound.
Right.
But it was, uh, overdone a little bit.
Right.
Too much glue and not in, in too many rocks.
So these are holes though, rather than
There are some.
than, than high spots. And there's, there's some corners up there that are pretty bad. So I, just in the future, and I get, those guys are usually pretty good, but somebody didn't do a very good job this year on it. So just watch them.
Would you tag, like, between which mile markers that you think are the worst maybe, just to?
Sure, it's a, I mean, it's pretty obvious, but yeah.
If you, uh,
Okay.
find me some mile markers, I'll go look at.
Okay. Yeah, I'd let them know that that's not, I mean, from my point of view.
They fixed a few spots, I know.
Yeah.
That, you know, it's not, um, it's not easy to get your the oil is not too bad. You can usually get a pretty, pretty smooth coating of oil, but the chips and any, any little thing goes wrong and they can, one, a little spot here will quit rolling or
Yeah.
quit rolling out evenly.
Yeah.
And so it's not a, it's not real scientific.
No, I, I see that. I've never seen it.
The equipment they use though has a lot to do with it in the shape because it drops those rocks. But anyway, they do you, when you get through there, somebody inspects that.
Yes.
Signs off on it.
Yeah. It, uh, and I, yes, I signed off on it. Um, there was nothing real major. I mean, those kind of things happen everywhere.
Hmm.
Every, every job we do. Uh, so there wasn't anything in my mind major.
Yeah.
But like I said, if you, if you pick out some spots.
Yeah, I, well, I've been thinking about taking pictures. I just think that they're gonna catch water and that's gonna cause you more trouble over the time, but yeah, I'll, I'll do that. I'll get you the info. Thank you.
Anything? Overton?
Oh, thank you. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hairan?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to line item C.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve submit you submit Wild Horse Gather Post Fire Letter alongside the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two range monitoring data on the Osborne Enterprise.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. Reese isn't here.
No, Reese isn't, but yeah, this was so, um, they're having a hard time getting on the federal gather schedule for this area again right now. And I think, um, we had sent a letter not too long ago, but based on the fire and the fact that the game from that fire area is probably headed, a lot of it headed west into the herd management area as well as some of those permatees that got burnt out on the east side of the creek. They have permits on the west side of the creek, but there is absolutely no feed to go to, and that's because of those horses, the excess numbers of horses. So, um, I wanted to, and, and in conversations with some of the upper level B L M folks in D C said, don't hesitate to send us another letter on that piece and bring that up. So Reese did that for us. That's why we did it.
True.
I mean, you know.
No, I'm.
Thank you. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Richfield?
Aye.
O'Hairan?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to line item D.
Madam Chair, I would move ratification of a letter of support from the Board of County Commissioners um, of Rio Blanco County to President Trump, supporting the letter from Governor Polis's FEMA assistance request.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. That's pretty self-explanatory.
Yep, got a copy of it.
Anybody have any questions? Sean, will you please call the roll?
O'Hairan?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to line item E. We will have a presentation by Vicki Edwards Administrator and Budget Director regarding the submission of the draft proposed twenty twenty-six county budget to the Board of County Commissioners pursuant to C R S twenty-nine dash one dash one zero five and direction to issue publication of the draft proposed twenty twenty-six budget pursuant to C R S twenty-nine dash one dash one oh six. All you.
Okay, it's all me. Okay.
Oh, and Lisa.
So what you have here is, um, the budget as it has been keyed into ClearGov. The initial round is complete. Um, there are still changes that will be made to the draft budget. So this will be on file at the clerk and recorder's office in both Meker and Rangeley. Um, so I will give this down to Sean for maybe your next run to Rangeley or see if the next, oh.
I was gonna say. I was gonna say, I usually take them.
Again, it is a snapshot in time. So this is a snapshot in time of our initial budget that we kind of went through. There's a lot of missing pieces that we are gonna continue to fill in that will modify this. Um, so with that, um, I will defer to Lisa to go over okay, your information.
Okay, I'm gonna need Chrissy to help me.
Oh, you need to share it on the screen.
Okay, yeah.
You mean joining Google? Must have been.
I know, cause it's kind of blurry, huh?
Blurry, but it helps if it's a difference.
It has, it's like focused right there.
Yeah.
If you look at it, like whoever's doing a presentation. And then the rest of us are blurry.
You're not seeing this.
Yeah.
It was just my eyes mushed off this morning. And I don't see that you've been invited.
She's not welcome today.
So she was like, yeah, I'll let you invite me. Let me just go that way.
To extend your invitation.
I should have taken that opportunity to, you should have ran. Yep, exactly.
Be on the seat, Lisa.
I'll need email address.
Okay. And then left you options. Do we have another? For me?
It gives an extra power point.
I'm sorry.
It's a power point and it doesn't look like it was giving for the option to show.
Okay.
To present that.
Oh, you should be tomorrow. Uh, I don't see any.
I don't have anything on.
Management. In the folder. And fourteen.
I know, sure.
In the ten fourteen.
I go back by screen. And at the end. Yes.
Oh, because they was trying to redo it for something. I don't remember. She called me last night. I can't do it tomorrow night. So that's why we were looking at.
So they changed the date on that?
Yeah.
So that's Friday?
Friday.
Well, this was actually C B E P insurance tool option, but it's not on our agenda, but it does show up.
So now when you try it, move one page forward.
As a special meeting.
Yeah.
On the folder. It wasn't C B E P. Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be on fourteen, cause I have parents to come.
Fine.
So it'll have to be Friday.
Bring them with you.
Okay.
All my parents. And the kids.
No. You don't want like, okay.
So do you wanna tell me when to change the thing and I can change it? Or you want to?
Sure. Oh, I can change it. Okay, if I just need this to do it.
Yep.
Okay. And we can go.
Another ask, could we can do it at two o'clock? Can we do it two o'clock on Friday?
Oh, well, this.
What do you guys have going on?
So. Um, okay, like that. Okay, if you go click. Hang on one second. Going towards a little of your screen. Okay. We have nine different seconds.
Yeah.
So I can sit on your lap.
Lisa, where's that picture?
It's from whatever PowerPoint gave me.
Okay.
Meandering versus.
Yeah, it's quite a meanders. There's things that we could be. It's easier to present if you're.
Thursday. Doug and I have Northwest TV on Frasier. We probably won't be back till late. Hopefully it doesn't go till, it's supposed to go till five o'clock.
Are you gonna stop now?
Do entire screen?
Or we can reach Craig.
Okay.
Let's connect here.
Yeah, that's just about it, J C, isn't it?
Yeah, unless I have to come back and pick up, oh, I doubt it's still not gonna work, right? Just I had to pop off my truck. There, you're not sharing. Here. Let me see what happened with the truck. We get to that or not.
Yeah, I can drive it to wherever.
Yeah. Let me see what goes on. We'll figure it out. We can't think about that right now, cause we gotta think about budget. Oh, there it goes.
Is it moving?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Oops, now I gotta go all the way around. I feel like that little the toy store you have to while we're at. One more. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so this is just based on the schedules that I sent to you. Oh. Um, wait, last week or earlier this week, the show twenty twenty-four actual, twenty twenty-five budget and twenty twenty-six um, current draft budget. And then I had some information over to the side too, um, from my last presentation about where we were at August twenty twenty-five. So I'll go through fund balance too for at least each of the major governmental funds and go through some of the key restrictions that you have in fund balance at the end of twenty-four and what's estimated for twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, fund balance is basically the difference between assets and liabilities. And for the governmental funds, it's really close to your cash balance. Um, there are some funds that have, um, large amounts of inventory or prepaid expenses, but for the most part, it's really current assets that are represented in that balance. The governmental funds, um, as I'm sure you're all sure, or as I'm sure you all know, are the general fund, road and bridge, uh, D H S and use tax. Um, there's also public health, C C I T F, capital expenditures, capital improvement, conservation trust, and the American Rescue Plan. Um, the public health, American Rescue Plan, and Conservation Trust are kind of all put together, the schedule I sent, just because they're the smaller what are considered non-major funds according to the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. That's just based on on the activity in those funds. Business type activities, you have proprietary funds, which are your solid waste landfill, the weed and pest fund, communications, and fair field. Um, and then you have internal services funds, which are central services. Um, these are the categories of fund balance. So when you look at the audited financial statements, this is how fund balance is broken out. Um, and the Governmental Accounting Standards Board has defined what each of these means and what authority somebody needs to be able to restrict or commit fund balances. And these categories apply to the governmental fund. So there's non-spendable fund balance, and that's for things that can't be spent. They're not in a form that's going to be liquidated. It's prepaid expenses and inventory, or if you had some kind of deposit you were holding for somebody else, that might be non-spendable because you can't use it for the county's expenditures. Restricted fund balance is the amount of fund balance that's restricted by others. So it would be grantors, creditors, uh, maybe individuals who don't need the money and said it had to go to a certain place. Um, and then it's also any restrictions that are dictated by law. So Tabor falls under that category, and that's mostly what the county has is restricted fund balance, uh, in its funds, especially the general fund. Committed fund balance, that's like an internal restriction. So this is, these are amounts that are constrained for a very specific purpose. And the government's highest decision-making authority is the one who can commit fund balance. So that's the Board of County Commissioners and commit fund balance. And for a balance to be uncommitted and used for a different purpose, the county commissioners also have to do that. Um, and that's usually through resolution. So when you do a budget and you're you have fund balance that's going to be used for a specific purpose to the budget process, at that time, the B O C C is making the determination that we're committing some of those funds to a specific purpose. Um, and most of the funds that are not the general fund, their fund balance is committed because in the past, the Board of County Commissioners has approved creating a fund for a specific purpose, and so the funds in those um, funds, or the fund balance in those funds is committed to the purpose of that fund. Assigned fund balance, this is, these are also internally restricted funds, but they can be assigned to management. So the Board of County Commissioners can say, okay, management can make the decision what to do with this piece of fund balance here. And so it can be assigned by management or the Board of County Commissioners. Unassigned fund balance only shows up in the general fund. So it's the only fund that would have unassigned fund balance that's available for appropriation for any use that the county would like to use that money for. Um, and we'll go through some of the, some of the different things that it can include in unassigned fund balance, um, moving forward. Um, so I broke up the general fund into parts because it's so big, it doesn't show up very well on a screen. But these are the general fund revenues as they're shown in the budget currently. Um, you'll note that pilled severance and mineral leasing are not in the budget for twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, just because those aren't budgeted due to the uncertainty of the amount that will be received in the next year. As of really September twenty twenty-five, the county has received uh, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars of pilled, fifty-eight thousand in severance, and then about one point three million dollars in mineral leasing. Um, and the twenty twenty-six budget um, is still pretty conservative. There's things, there are items like interest earnings that are currently budgeted at one point three million dollars. Um, already in twenty twenty-five, we have about one point five million dollars of investment earnings in the general fund. Um, and the twenty twenty-four actual amount was three point two million. Um, and then this shows just, I put this slide up again. I showed this the last workshop we did too, where you have pilled severance and mineral leasing over time so that you can see kind of what's happened with those revenues. Um, pilled seems to be the most stable with all increases from year to year. Um, here are the general fund expenditures. So the twenty twenty-six budget has about thirteen point eight million dollars less than expenditures, does it sound, I mean, thirteen point eight million dollars in expenditures, which is about one point uh, seven less than the twenty twenty-five budget. Um, this, this is subject to change, of course. Um, and I tried to break out the different types of expenditures. So I broke out operating expenses from inter-fund charges. The inter-fund charges being payments to fleet management, central services, um, road and bridge, weed and pest for different inter-fund services that those funds provide. Um, and then I also broke out capital outlay, transfers out to other funds and contingency funds. Kind of see, um, operating separate from those items. And then I broke out the general fund change in fund balance that you can see total revenues of eleven point one million, total operating expenses in the budget right now of eleven point seven. And which results in a change in fund balance before transfers, capital outlay and contingency of one, it's a loss, a use of fund balance of one point five million dollars. I don't know if you could see that very well, it's showing. And then the twenty twenty six budget as it stands now would result in about thirty million dollars, thirty point eight million dollars of fund balance at December thirty first. Um, when I did this estimate, I did use ending budgeted fund balance as the beginning fund balance for the general fund and most of the other funds as well. And this is probably pretty conservative. I'm not sure that the general fund will actually give it to fund balance between a five point two million dollars since we budgeted in twenty twenty five. So that's probably a really conservative estimate. And then this is, this is kind of how fund balance breaks down um, for each of the years. So I failed to put the, the years on here, but the far left column is twenty twenty six budget, the middle is the twenty twenty five budget, and then the far right column is twenty twenty four actual. They have restricted, the only restricted balance and fund balance for the general fund is the Tabor right now. And it's based on three percent of the county's revenues are restricted for Tabor. And this is, it's generally all of the revenues of the county, except for you go back and exclude federal revenues. Um, so any federal grants that come in get excluded from this calculation. Any donations from individuals or groups that are donating to the county get excluded. And then sales of any assets also get excluded from this calculation. Non-spendable balances are generally prepaid and deposits in the general fund. Um, you have some assigned balances, so you have the electric sales tax grants. Um, and I tried to come up with what that balance would be in twenty six. In twenty four, it was two hundred and seventy nine thousand, two fifty nine. Um, twenty twenty five, using the current activity in the fund, it's going to be about two hundred and sixty nine thousand, two fifty nine. And I estimated based on budget, um, for twenty twenty six, that it would be about two hundred and ninety five thousand. And that is from the utility perspective.
Right, yeah.
From the utility, so there's a share of those funds that we have to, right, that's in your fund. If you're looking in ClearGov, it would be, um, eleven oh three. It's that's two hundred, that balance is kind of a rolling balance that we track though, based on the activity in that.
And that's where you would typically do Commissioner CDGF, that's your CDGF granting pool.
Is the twenty nine or yeah, two ninety five?
Yeah, two ninety five.
Um, you've got extension program activities and I just hard to guess that it would be about nine thousand, still be about nine thousand dollars. Um, future capital projects, this would be anything that you have in the budget that you are planning to use for capital projects in the next year. That's what that balance would be in currently in the general fund. It's, I think in the budget, it's about forty five thousand dollars and that could change. So if you're going to do any transfers from the general fund to the capital projects funds, to fund any prod, specific projects, it would be included here in this balance. Right now, all that we have specific for capital projects is forty five thousand.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that's not on our little sheet here, right?
No.
Okay.
No, and I can send, I'll send this to the navigation.
Um, the unassigned fund balance, I put future funding stabilization down there just because the Governmental Accounting Standards Board requires any committed or assigned fund balances to be very specific. Um, and they specifically say you can't have rainy day type funds in a committed fund balance. So we've included it in unassigned, but that really is an internal restriction that previous county commissioners, I think, looking back, it looks like this is, this has been a balance that's been carried forward for years, where you guys have said, we want to keep about seven point five million dollars and for future funding stabilization, in case anything should happen, we're keeping this amount in the general fund. Um, I also have a working capital balance there and that's about three months of operating expenses. So it's a calculation of three months of operating expenses. So it, uh, does not include any capital outlay or transfers, um, or contingency funds in that balance.
Lisa, quick question on future funding stabilization, how many counties keep that? I mean, I don't, a lot of them just basically stick with Tabor and not do future funding stabilization, or is that typical in most counties?
No, it really depends on if you have the available fund. So a lot of them don't have the available funds to hold a huge balance in a funding stabilization capacity, but they will hold something like a working capital and say, we want to maintain ninety days cash on hand or fund balance or something for operation. So it's common to do that.
Standard to have ninety days of things.
Yeah. Yeah, ninety days is probably the most standard, ninety or a hundred and twenty days. And the, um, I just left.
You have any idea when you were looking at that seven point five million, how many years that's been going on?
Uh, yeah, I could go back and look. It seemed like it was several years to me.
Like ten, twenty?
I'm not sure if it's been ten.
Just curious if it moved with inflation or if it moved at all, or that's just something.
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I haven't seen anything indicating that it moves with inflation at all. It's just a, I don't know. Get determined. I think one of the reasons why you would separately have a, a a balance that you're internally designating like this is because it's a really flexible amount of money. So it's all there in a sign, unassigned fund balance. So if the Board of County Commissioners decided, okay, we need to use this, it's really easy to use this and you don't have any obligation to pay it back. Tabor, you have to have a declared emergency and then there are requirements to pay that back as soon as possible. So it's much more difficult to use Tabor emergency funding than to just set aside your own funds.
And probably one of the reasons they established it is that to, to kind of get that, 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 well, it's not really a touch because it's perfectly legal, but where you don't have to, uh, declare emergency, call Tabor and try to figure out how you're going to pay it back when you're in the dip in that money in the first place. Our accounting people were taking care of us.
Um, road and bridge fund, this came out really very small. The road and bridge fund, the twenty twenty six budget contemplates using about one point eight million dollars of fund balance. Um, and that's entirely going to be used for capital outlay projects that are budgeted for one point one million eight hundred and fifty thousand.
So I'm thinking that the construction for, at least I don't know for sure. I don't think construction for County Road, uh, five, Bird Bridge is on there. That's the two point two. Um, I did see seventeen and the engineering for seventeen and the engineer, engineering for, but not the actual uh, construction, which will be one of the things we'll talk about later is to live on that at the two point two, then it comes in or we can get a grant to offset that, but.
And this is, this is what, uh, road and bridge fund balance looks like. So total fund balance, really conservatively, is expected to be about eight point seven million dollars at the end of twenty twenty six. Um, about one point two million of that is in inventory. Um, and about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand is in deposits and prepaid expense. About three million of it can be used for appropriate appropriating for whatever purpose you'd like. It's, uh, just for the general purpose of the fund. Um, and then working capital, you've got about three months of working capital in there too. Besides the other three million dollars that's available. And then future capital projects is one point eight million. Human Services Fund. Um, we're still waiting on information, I think, to finalize the budget to DHS. But this is the current estimate. And their fund balance also has some restrictions in it. So one of the restricted balances in that seven hundred and ninety two thousand estimated twenty twenty six fund balance amount is for the collaborative management program. And that's a grant that they've gotten money ahead of time and they just need to spend that. And so it's sitting there and has to be spent for the specific purposes of that grant. Um, and then there's five hundred and ninety five thousand available for the general purpose of the fund. Um, and the amount of operating expenses they have in fund balance is only about fifty one days at the end of twenty twenty six. For twenty twenty four, that was at about eighty two days.
How many days did you say?
Um, twenty twenty six, I'm estimating about fifty days. For twenty twenty four, it was at eighty two days.
Community management, that's when it rolls over each year, right?
Yeah, they got money ahead of time, so they're holding on to that and spending it as they have funds that, like with the grant agreement.
Yeah, and the reason it filled up like that, we had a few years that we didn't have a, a community management program. Uh, last year we developed that, so there actually, uh, I can just spend some mainly to keep, um, families from really having to come into the social services. And that if we can spend a little money on a family stabilization in certain ways, it won't become a, a dependence in the lack action, that's what that's used.
Um, Use Tax Fund, it's budgeted to stay pretty flat. So the net change to fund balance is expected to be about thirteen hundred dollars. Um, and there's four point two million dollars in fund balance in the Use Tax Fund. Expected to be at the end of twenty twenty six. At the end of twenty twenty four, it was also four point two million dollars. So Mickey, sorry, does this have the updated figures you mentioned to us before?
No, Lisa's would not have that. Uh, she told, um, she told me yesterday that her projection. So under um, construction materials, um, her end of year, she anticipates coming up over forty five thousand dollars above what she budgeted, so four forty five. For motor vehicle use tax, she budgeted four hundred and fifty thousand, it's going to come in around six hundred and seventy six thousand.
Okay.
So those two figures will be updated, I did update those in Inco, or I mean, uh, Quick Gov.
You did update those? And then, so then in twenty six's budget, you said she dropped the four hundred to three fifty?
Yes. For construction materials. She thought that that would be best to take that down to three fifty. But then on motor vehicle use tax, she increased from five twenty five to five forty.
And she thought the fire had something to do with dropping the construction?
Yeah, because she wasn't sure a lot of that could be done. Um, you know, if it's gonna, you know, whether people are going to have the money to redo things or bring in more. Um, and then she wasn't sure as far as a lot of this, the research that she did, I believe she said some state programs could be tax free or basically not have that sales tax tied to it um, because of FEMA. So like when you purchase goods or something like that, you can deduct that. So then therefore we wouldn't get the, possibly the county's sales tax. She didn't know and so she said, I want to go conservative and, um, you know, budget for less if we come in more than we'll be, but it's at least, but not buy a whole lot. You're talking fifty thousand dollars there, but while making it up for the motor vehicle use tax.
And the Use Tax Fund balance is pretty much available for appropriation and use by the Board of County Commissioners. There's only a small piece that's non-spendable for prepaid expenses, but and it's got a large fund balance. So the days of operating expenses for that fund on hand in fund balance is about thirteen, fourteen hundred days. So it's. CCITF, um, investment income is is budgeted in twenty twenty six to be in line with twenty twenty five, um, which is probably low considering currently, I think through August, the investment income in that fund has been about five hundred and forty five thousand dollars. Um, in the actual amount in twenty twenty four was four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. There is, currently there is nothing budgeted in CCITF for expenditures, so it would be up to you guys to determine if you want to use CCITF funds to transfer to the, the capital. Currently, I think you'd like to keep twenty million dollars as a principal balance in that fund. And there's about two million dollars currently. It's an error at the end of twenty twenty four, it's available to be spent. Capital Improvement Fund, I think there are some adjustments to this. I talked to Vicki the other day and we need to adjust the capital outlay in here for some of those airport projects. I think that are completed, just what's sitting in here. Um, but there, depending on what projects are in here, there will probably be pre-transfers from another fund, either the rest of you or CCITF to the general funds that. So Vicki, one of those that we, so it's showing Columbine Park of a one point one million.
That was for that grant that we could not.
Right, so that'll come out of twenty six.
Okay.
And so right now, there's nothing in there as of now. And I think actually when I, after I talked to you yesterday, I looked at that and I think that's, that one point one might actually be the fuel farm.
Yeah. Columbine Park, yeah, way too much for Columbine Park. That was only five hundred.
Okay. It was under Columbine Park, but. I had it, I had it listed as Columbine Park and it was showing up that way, but I think it's, when I drilled down on it and looked at what the expense was, that
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's just a part of the Meeker Airport, but fuel farm specific, okay.
And Meeker Fuel Park.
Right. I assume, and then.
Meeker Farm is, is that the one million, one eighty nine, three ninety eight?
I have one million, one sixty seven, four one fourteen. Because there was twenty thousand that's already been spent, I think in twenty twenty five, so that the project that had some that were already spent. I've got a little Gary perhaps. It's that. That's the one we did make an adjustment to, one, one, six, seven, four, one, four. Those needs in an adjustment. So.
Talk to Eric again to clarify that.
In the three point two, two, five airport, that project should be wrapped up this year. Is that everything on Meeker Airport? Pretty much, so we can take that out twenty six as well.
I think I've already updated ClearGov.
Yeah, I couldn't see the update in my ClearGov. I wasn't sure, I was. I couldn't see the update in my ClearGut. I wasn't sure if I was Capital Expenditures Funds, there are a few little projects in here and this will also be transferred to it. Find the balance. Here are the non-major governmental funds, so Public Health, American Rescue Plan and Conservation Trust Fund. Kayla did find out about one of kind of our good brands that they are getting, they are getting that grant this year, so her budget isn't changing, I don't believe. This is pretty much, I think, what it will be. American Rescue Plan should be all spent and I don't, I'll have to look and make sure that that money is it tied to something else that you guys have already budgeted for another project, but there's about expected to be about $500,000 or $800,000 left in that fund. For 2026.
And that's the what's the acronym for that one?
That one is, it'll be the L A T C F monies.
This one's L A T C F, okay.
The SLURF money is just about nearly spent.
Sorry, SLURF.
And your solid waste landfill. Contemplating using about $763,000 of that position. But a million of that is expected capital outlay expense. Communications Fund. The current budget is expected to add to net position by about $19,000. About 713,000 of the total net position in the Communications Fund, if it is invested in capital assets. Do you have this available amount of 4.3 million to be able to budget? And the solid waste landfill has some capital assets too. So here at the bottom, I've shown that there's about 784,000 in capital assets in solid waste landfill. About 1.6 million is restricted for closure and post-closure costs at the landfill. And it leaves about $3 million, $3 million that's available for creation. Weed and Pest Fund. They've budgeted to use quite a bit of their fund balance in 2026. And they budgeted to use quite a bit in 20, about the same amount, about 500,000 in 2025 as well, but I'm it doesn't look like they'll use all that money. Currently through August, they have about an increase to fund balance of about $7,000. And I don't anticipate a lot of activity in that fund that would come out to that much expense, but I'm not sure.
I bet they are going to have a lot of trouble with weeds down there after that fire.
I talked with both Chris and Vicky and they know that it's, they're maybe dipping into fund balance, but it was, yeah, they, and they have not typically spent what they budgeted. They were always just budgeting quite a bit more. She thinks that both of them have mentioned that they do anticipate they're going to be spending quite a bit more.
Yeah, I think so. It's just
And they've got a significant fund balance to be able to do so, so.
Does this include both pants, lower and then jeans? So this is everybody's in this fund, okay. But we don't know how much is each one based on this.
Uh, not on that, but you
But can look in this. Okay.
Fairfield, Fairfield probably does need some some help to shore up its fund balance from another fund from transfer or something. I've broken out at the bottom of this how net position is broken out for Fairfield, so in total the 2026 budget would be about $2 million in fund balance, but about 2.1 million of that is invested in capital assets. So if you're looking at the liquid assets available to the fund, they're, they're going negative in 2026, probably unless they have some additional funding.
So in English, that's costing us a lot of money.
Fairfield, yes. Here's the Fleet Fund. So the Fleet Fund also has a significant amount of its fund balance is invested in capital assets. So it's about 5, 5.1 million in capital assets that the Fleet Fund has of their 5 million. At the end of 2024, it was 6,486. They budgeted to use about $715,000 in 2025. I'm not sure if that's how things will work out.
I don't, well, I don't think so. I don't think they've forced anything large.
Yeah, so they'll probably come out really ahead.
Probably will by here. Kind of back up to Curragh Hill. Just a second. On the Curragh Hill, that D H S and public health offices is over there. I assume that that income is on that where some of that get paid for by the state? Is that, how does that work out on those offices?
Yeah, the, the D H S can lease its offices up, but them together, it comes from the, I think the hip class funds or right there. Which bucket it comes out of. But we're working on a policy. I've got a draft of the policy and a, and a lease agreement for the D H S to both Rangeli and the Meeker Office, need to get the amount to put in there. I know Eric's looked at it. He, he's had no changes, but need somebody to be able to get me an amount that I put in, so we can do that, but that should be money that the, helps office and I don't think it's gonna fully will have offset at least some of the
So that hasn't been happening in the past?
I think it has, but I don't think we've had a policy or lease do it. I think they've taken a number and it's probably an outdated number and just doing a plan transfer. You know that leasing?
Yeah. Yeah, that number probably has to be updated.
Yeah, that, I wonder how long it's been since it's been adjusted and if that helps our situation on building.
I'll look at that and see, but you should be able to cover those costs with the entities using building. Allocated across the programs, I think. I'm not sure how that rent expense goes in there if it goes to
So since we own the building in Rangeli, does that go back into D H S's fund or is it going to, all of it going to Fairfield?
Well, there should be a, another, and I don't know how it's accounted for, but Rangeli should have a, an amount attributed to it. And that should probably go into the, the general funds. In fact, all of it should go into the general fund, which then would be allocated as you guys deem appropriate. What a building you need to
The state allows that, if they're paying a portion of that rent, that it goes into our general fund and not back to D H S?
I think it, I think it goes back to D H S.
That's what I thought.
I think it's being allocated to programs and it's coming back to D H S through the settlement.
Okay.
Okay.
That's what I was remembering, but I just didn't know if that's and is that just the Rangeli side and then the Fairfield side here Meeker goes to into this fund?
I think so. I think that
I don't know how they, they've been accounting for.
I think, you know, one thing that I think we need to clarify is for the Rangeli H S, H H S building, that is we have that actually budgeted in two places, well, four two places. There's under Health and Human Services under their separate 24 budget. And then of that, facilities maintenance has a breakout under the general fund of 1952. I think when you're looking at this Fairfield, that that is the majority of the apartments, I believe, not just the, the regular part of the facility, but I have to come because this is an enterprise fund. And I believe this is the apartments.
Oh, this, this doesn't have anything to do with the building?
I don't think the lease or anything like that goes through that. I think the, the lease for the Fairfield, I believe, comes from Health and Human Services Fund 24. And then basically that breakout comes up from Eric's 19 line. I think that offset is.
We don't need to spend a lot of time on that, but I'd like to figure out how that works.
Yeah, I can do that. Central Services Fund. There are some, a little bit of capital assets in Central Services, about $51,000. So Central Services will need a little bit more funding. And I did find just him when I was doing that for Central Services, that he who did that, he signed 2016.
So in this fund, and I would need to confirm with I T, there's a couple of groups that have been riding in the budget for a while. One of 23,000 for Paul Miller's audit. That's, that would be typically about what was seen, extra probably. There was $30 purchase services data support in there for $30,000 marked for ADA. I'm not sure, I don't know if that's in essence, if we're going to have to do that or not. So that would be 30,000 there, but we may not be able And then one of the biggest jumps was on our CAP, Property and Casualty Insurance. And Lisa, it looks like in 2026, we're budgeting A11, 115 on that versus 5 which was last year. So those three, the one that I'm really not sure of is that 30,000, whether that needs to be in there or not, so that would come out, I think. I think that's because Kelly doesn't want to spend anything on
What? No, I don't want to spend anything. What?
Talking on Central Services, there was a $30,000 hotline item. It was in, but it did in 2025 for ADA. Data support. And with Lynn's new program, I don't see us doing that. I don't know from Trevor's standpoint, I'll have to clarify with him if there's because we're not doing any systems, at least budgeting anything in 2026 to do any additional ADA activities other than what Lynn's doing on the website, but that's, was included under her budget.
Any questions on this one? That's about all I have, so if you have questions on anything. Thank you.
All right, any questions? No, just thank you for this. This helps me considerably. All right. Moving on to line item F.
Line item F. Consideration. And Chairman, I move for the adoption of a policy for D H S regarding sub recipient monitoring.
Second. I have a motion and a second. This is fairly new to me. Is this something new that the
Well, it was something that we got kind of dinged on because we didn't have one. And so Lisa found one and I went back through the regulations, put it together, so we'd be in compliance on that. But we, our pass through and use federal funds in order to fund a lot of our programs and things like that, we've got to have that policy digged in our audits. It was something that I hadn't worked with either. Fortunately, Lisa was able to have one that she could pull up. That gave me a pretty good basis. I went back through and I took those regulations regarding sub recipients, a lot of them, developed it based on that.
We don't have any sub recipients at D H S, right? We just have contractors.
Well, contractors, but that money goes to
Right, to the contractors. And that's why at the contractors, we have to clarify that they are not suspended under Bard, right? Is that right that?
It's got a little bit of that, there's we, it's also monitoring of those contracts, make sure that they're complying with the various requirements as well. And that's, that's bigger, you know, than, than that and suspended, because we don't have a lot of big contractors that would be likely to hit the suspended would be marked for this, like anyway that for throwing through, there's, there's some big entities, but so I've never seen an issue with the suspended as far as more of the compliance with the federal guidelines for, for each individual fund policies associated with that. So are you understanding too?
So if we have to have this for D H S, wouldn't we have to have it for Public Health too?
We probably do need it for Public Health. It probably needs to apply to really everything at the county under the uniform guidance, which are the federal regulations. Every how you spend federal money. You probably should have that policy in place for any of your federal grants. If you, especially if you were going to pass the through, I don't know if you guys have historically ever passed through funds and had such grantees, but on that policy.
Yeah, the, the the regulations, the, the, the state federal regulations apply to every federal sub recipient policy. And we needed it for D H S, so that's why we
Was the state requesting it? Is that why we had to get this done?
Yeah, we, we kind of got a, a shot across the bow that you don't have this, you need this. Part of our state records in order to make sure that we're able to comply. And if you don't do it, then that's without it. We're going to get it done.
We probably need to get them done for the rest of the departments that
Okay, so we're just the general county policy. Apply to everybody, but to H S, H S usually you got to have your specific if you recall when they're audits, immediately they want to see your policy.
Thank you. If you guys have any questions. Will you please call the real Sean?
Chris Hill?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hairn?
Aye. Motion passes, moving on to line item G.
So Madam Chair, I would move approval of the agreement, temporary construction easement and permanent easement with 4M Ranch LLC for the County Road 77 Bridge Project.
I will second that broadly.
That motion is second? He is excited it's off his plate.
And while the project's still
It's still very much working, but at least we got this one. This is a big step too, this is
You guys have any questions? Will you please call the real Sean?
O'Hairn?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Chris Hill?
Aye.
Ms. O'Hairn, there, the documents that are there. She's already, okay, she's just signed them just now, that's
Just now.
Yeah. I will come down and record that as soon as we're done. And then that will be tomorrow or Thursday. When would I be able to get the month? Okay.
Motion passes, moving on to line item H.
And Chairman, I move to approve for the approval of a letter to A E C in Garnet, Garnet Representatives confirming the board's acceptance of two proposed variances for County Road 77 Bridge Project contingent upon C Intinging upon C dot. Confirmation that the variances will not impact the DOLA grant.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Believe one of those was type of cement mix. And the other one was.
Bridge railing.
The railing got changed.
And uh so both of those um. C dot had originally said they would issue us a letter saying that they're fine with those two substitutions. We've not seen that letter yet. Um, this was actually brought up before you the last meeting, but uh we needed something to document the file. Showing that the board was okay with those two changes contingent upon C dot.
Yeah. Yeah, and C dot. I think said that as long as it, because it's not.
It's not actually a C dot project. They don't care.
Yeah.
Um, but we wanted, because it's a DOLA project. And Dana Hablick said, you know, well, as long as the county's happy with it, we'll be happy with it, but you better document and file. So it does not sound like it will jeopardize our C dot, I mean, our um DOLA grant.
Anything else in that?
No.
Sean, will you please call the roll?
Overton.
Hi.
Richfield.
Hi.
O'Hairn.
Hi.
Um, motion passes, moving on to line item I.
Madam Chair, I would move approval of a revised scope of work letter to DOLA. Modifying County Road Seventy-seven Bridge Project, single span to single pier design.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. You.
This is that same discussion we had at previous meeting. Uh, basically Dola just said to change that scope. Because we've originally applied for a. Single span bridge, but because they're putting a pier in the river, they need to make sure that that scope is amended. Um, they'll continue to get the four oh four permits and all of that, um floodplain verification that that pier's not going to cause an issue. But this is just our requesting that in the documentation to go along with that.
Perfect. Thank you. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Richfield.
Hi.
O'Hairn.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Motion passes, moving on to line item J.
And Chairman, I move to ratify the letter to the Colorado OEM Director, Trevor Danny. Requesting state assistance with Rio Blanco County's cost share. For recovery and mitigation projects following the twenty point five million help fires and subsequent flooding.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Let's see, have we sent that yet, Vicky?
I don't know. I don't. I don't know.
Okay. So do I need to, if it's not due, I need to, yeah, I'm going to do that.
Um, it stated at ten, that according to the letter that we have here.
Right. I just don't know that it's gotten off the one.
I don't know. I I don't recall.
Cause I haven't. So.
Okay.
If we need to, I'd like to get that done today.
Not.
Okay. So if I can get the final one, I'll get it to him. I can get it.
I think he did send it though.
Ratification would. Insinuate that.
Yeah, it's, I'm afraid it hasn't, but. Okay.
Okay.
This last round of line, yeah.
Uh, will you please call the real Sean?
O'Hairn.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Richfield.
Hi.
Uh, motion passes, moving on to line item K.
Um, Madam Chair. Let's see, let me, okay, I need discussion before this. So is this letter written? Do we, I did not get the chance to look at that.
File, and that's why I was asking earlier, because we have actually. Done those two projects. Um, you know, would, do we still need this letter? And the answer was yes, we did, because then we can. Send this letter and then send our. Construction costs for the, the two culverts that they cleaned out.
Okay.
For inclusion in there.
Yeah, my apologies. I didn't get that read. I.
The only thing that that we didn't have completed was exceed amount. We wanted them to.
And that was so that if they were doing the project, that they couldn't, that it would be reasonable. Um, but since we've completed the projects, it won't be a contractor that we'll be using. It was.
So I don't know if you need the letter or not then.
The letter then, I think we just need to send them now. It's already been completed. I don't think letter needs no more.
My, and I think those were the only two projects that they're at, they were asking for bridge cleaning or. Hopeful cleaning. So. If we don't need it, then it's not muddy those waters.
I agree. I think if send them that, and I have a Sean how much we expended to do that. If they need something different, they can tell us.
Yeah.
About.
Okay.
So what do we do to get this off the agenda?
I just do a letter.
So if it's not.
You think, yeah, that one just. Table it indefinitely.
I was going to say table it indefinitely, in that way it's.
I'm going to table it indefinite.
Second.
All right. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Overton.
Hi.
Richfield.
Hi.
O'Hairn.
Hi. We have no resolutions, uh, no public hearings, moving on to other business, road and bridge update.
You got me opinion.
Yeah.
Um. Been busy, obviously, with all of the flood cleanup and. And projects. County Road Five and Eight has been almost nonstop. Uh, replaced a culvert on County Road Five. And we had to cut the pavement to replace that culvert. So then we patched it. We patched two or three other spots on County Road Five at the same time.
Are those culverts that just, you couldn't get them clean otherwise? You just had to take them out?
That was a. An HDPE culvert that just burned out.
Oh, that one. Okay.
The one that's already been done. You just patched the concrete, that asphalt.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
You do that. Okay.
Uh, let's see, we've been hauling gravel or did haul gravel up to the Marvine Parking Lot. And blading as we could on County Road Fifteen, Seventeen, Thirteen and Thirty-eight. And uh. Hauling uh, hauled a dozer back down to the landfill. And hauled the track, track hole. From the landfill to Range Lee so that they can use it on their. In route two oh two bridge project. We were down there to look at it the other day. It's a, it's a pretty good project to have to dig and hold. Whole thing out and replace all of the decking on that. Abutment. Big project. Uh. Blading County Road One Forty-two, One Forty-three. We were hauling gravel, or we did haul gravel up on County Road Seventeen. Um. Out of. The uh Sleepy Cat pit. As we're crushing up there, we're hauling material out as well. Um. Make room for more crap. Crushing more gravel in there. And. Square S Bridge, that's been a. A problem, ongoing problem, keeping it clean, cleaned out. We went and looked at it the other day. It's a. It's a mess. I don't know what, what else we're going to do with it.
Um, and I was happy there.
Yes, ma'am.
We had a, a, on our recovery group about possibly, Lynn thought she has uh maybe a GoPro. We could somehow attach on the underside of the bridge just to watch how that. That flow is going, whether we can keep it there longer or not, just to see how fast that refills up with debris.
Yeah.
Um, but she was thinking a GoPro. She could set it for time lapse. It would just be kind of interesting to see. You know, because they cleaned it out. It looked clean as a whistle and.
Probably would have had it down there this morning.
Yeah. Well, we were going to try and do it last Friday, which would have been interesting, but we didn't have time. But that is an option that uh Lynn said she's got a GoPro, that she, an older one, that if it gets damaged, it, you know.
Yeah.
What are you, what are the object of doing that?
Just to watch the flow coming down. So it's been cleaned out. How long is it going to take for that to? Fill back up?
Yeah.
Doesn't that depend on the weather?
Well, exactly.
Yeah.
But the time lapse would basically show you, you know, when an event starts, you know, how much debris is coming down.
And how, how much debris is filling up in there inside that culvert, uh, bridge? And what has to be cleaned up?
What are they going to tell you? What's the object of the data?
Object of the data would just be for information purposes that you know for the next five years, it's going to be doing this probably. Every five storms, four storms. And it's no cost.
Be nice if we could, if we could uh. Future, guess the weather. We can't guess the weather, so I don't know what.
No, I think it just is, it's free information.
Yeah.
It's just a interesting, you know, to watch that flow and how fast or how slow maybe. You know, you can extrapolate from that, how long you think it's going to take. If winds remain, or, you know, storms are. This. You know, and this is least of persons.
Or it could be useful for uh state or federal. Moneys uh. Reports or whatever to come. In future.
Just that way.
Have to mount it on something pretty tall.
Yeah.
So it doesn't go away with it. You could have a video of it going like this down the river.
Yeah.
Well, it's waterproof, so when it goes down the river, we'll be able to track it for a while to monitor it.
The um. It's pretty much it for. We could. Uh, Range Lee, they have actually been sending some people from Range Lee up here to help us with. Flood cleanup and gravel hauling and. What have you, just because we're shorthanded. And with everything going on. Just need a little more help. So at least one or two of them, pretty much every day, they've been coming up here. Uh, they've been hauling pit run out on County Road Twenty-seven. Uh, spot graveling, then also on Twenty-seven and Sixty-five. And um. It happened last month, but just uh. Last week, we went in and remagged. Reworked and remagged County Road Sixty-five. Um, usually have to do that twice a year. It's a heavy truck traffic road. Uh, color cleaning on One oh two, flood cleanup on One oh two. The blading. They were Twenty-seven, One oh nine, Twenty-five, One Thirty-eight, One Eleven and One oh five. Flood cleanup on Cat, yeah, they've been up here, like I said, helping on the flood cleanup on End Route Five and. And Eight as well. And they were up here helping in the gravel haul up on County Road Seventeen and. We're also now starting in on. End of One Fifteen, we, the deal we made with the Forest Service was that we. We do the first mile of One Fifteen. And then they're going to buy gravel from us. To do the rest of One Fifteen.
And that's over. Uh.
Here for Newcastle.
Be for Newcastle?
Uh, that's County Road Seventeen.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. The which road are we, oh.
Goes up. Uh. From, and I've not, I've been over one time, but that was several years ago. And it goes up from. End Route Eight. And comes out, I believe, on Yellow Jacket.
Was that Pond Creek River off of County Road Eight?
As part of, I believe, yes.
Pond Creek over to uh. Yellow Jacket.
Wow, can improve that road. That'd be, that's.
That's, I think they were planning to do that to uh. Uh, for logging.
Okay.
Up in that area.
Okay.
The logging was going to go on on Yellow Jacket. I don't know how it is.
Yeah.
The other road would be from on my. Lake Avery to Yellow Jacket.
Yeah, that makes sense, coming out of there with a log. So if you're coming off. Yeah, be interesting. I'm checking.
I think they are planning to come down.
Fon Creek?
By Avery.
Oh, by Avery. Yeah, that would make sense.
I'm not.
They're that guy. Yeah. Cause I, I don't think they can make that corner coming off Fon Creek and back.
I don't know. I understood the sale was more on the Yellow Jackets.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, why they're wanting to come this way, I don't know. And what are you going to do when they get here? If they're going to take. Seventeen and over, I don't, I don't know.
I'm just glad they're going to get some timber out of there.
Yeah.
I'm good for that.
Yeah.
Get rid of some more of it.
Before it burns up.
Yeah.
And we get some of our roads.
Yes, exactly. That's exciting. So what was that road number again?
One Fifteen. It, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself this partially into October. But uh. We were hauling. Three inch material, three inch minus out of. Wacara. Up there to do some improvement on One Fifteen before we start hauling three quarter inch out of Sleepy County. So. All the gravel pot.
Yeah, I see a lot of trucks up there. I was wondering what the deal was. Didn't know.
Is One Fifteen a county road?
For a mile.
Yeah, so it's just a, a county road till it hits a forest and then it turns into a Forest Service road.
I believe that is correct. Let's see, they have. Started mowing uh road shoulders. Since we got a little moisture now, we can, we can do that. But uh County Road One, Two, Twenty-one, Sixty-five and One oh eight. And we're working on reclaiming uh Baxter Pit Pass. Um. I didn't say that right, did I?
What would I know what you meant?
Baxter.
I was just. I was thinking the same thing. Like, hold on a sec.
Oh, wait. Um. So anyway, it's, it's a, it's a long ways down there. And we don't use much material out of there, and it's not very good material anyway. Mostly just dirt. So uh. We're, they pretty much got it. Shaped up and uh. I got them some seed. They're going to get it seeded and. Uh, get the reclamation project started and get rid of that gravel pit. And that's all I have.
That's a lot. Thank you. Yeah.
We've been busy.
Yes, you have.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'd just like to give a shout out to Rob first, because everybody over there is just organizing so hard, keep everything open, going. I mean, every, you know, every person has just done a phenomenal job without a break since August, really.
Mm-hmm.
That is a fact. I can attest to their. They're just uh. Going. Sometimes day and night. With little rest.
Don't we appreciate it?
Yes, please do.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have county attorney update.
The only thing I really have is uh, uh, even library uh of our trying to get all of those appointments between the town and the third uh. Uh, library board in the, in the county, written up and all that. Um, the library, uh, district approved attorney sheet last night. The attorney's for library board is uh looking at, or is working on, to have a view. They're going to circulate to uh be in the, in the town attorney. In order to do that, the term sheet that basically. Um, uh, sets the qualifications of, of a person serving. Um, resident within the district boundaries for twelve consecutive months. A current major regional library cardholder, at least eighteen years old, eligible lecturer of the district. And submitted a complete application deadline whenever they appoint. Um, district has responsibility to maintain the trustee records and make sure that we don't have this happening yet. Did the, we're going to go within the five years uh. Uh, stay your schedule, maintain the appointing author's authority rotation where we do one time where the. Town does it one time, where the county does it one time, where it's a showing appointment. Um, and then uh set up by the application form, the bylaws and trustee expectation, the time commitment and things. Do. Um, and then receive and transmit the application to the. Um and then receive and transmit the application to the appointing authority, so it's our turn to point. And then uh set us the applications and everything.
So just to make sure I'm understanding, in the past, if we, the county would advertise. You know, now accepting applications for the uh library board, and we have one point five positions available or two. We are not gonna have to do that any longer, they're going to do that, and then when they get the applications, they'll submit them to us.
Right, they're, they're gonna advertise, they're going to try to get uh people to do, so we no longer, they're gonna keep them. Track, or they're supposed to, their duties are to keep track of whose turn it is to along those terms on a B and things of that. And then um then they're gonna come, uh pose uh. Uh committee for an interview committee that uh's going to go through those applications for the board and.
They're gonna do what, what then?
Uh they're gonna do an interview committee to interview those, and they're going to have a town trustee, county commissioner. Uh a district trustee that's not up for appointment, good large individuals, appointed by the majority of the. Of other uh people on the interview committee. Um and then they're going to, and everybody needs to have a library card. The town, um because they're, they're a part of that anyway. Uh but for that large people, they need to have library cards.
I'm not sure I'm okay with that, Don. I, I know, if we're gonna appoint, we need to be the ones that appoint, I don't want for somebody to bring somebody in here and say, appoint this person.
Yeah, well, and I think we've got the ability, that's one of the things that. Discussed is the town or, or the, kinda have the ability to say, no, we don't like any of these applications.
So why have it in the agreement otherwise? Why don't they just, if they wanna advertise it? And get them, and then bring them to us, we are the committee. Is that what I'm hearing? That's how we've been being, right?
Yes.
So why would we change that?
I don't want to.
Okay. And let them know that that part's not gonna be acceptable to the county.
And so then if I, so then one year it would be us, then another year it would be the town.
Yeah, the way it, the way it's set up, and it's a combined district, so we're combining deployments, the town and the county. So the way, that's why they set it up in the, in. Where the, the, the town has one appointment, has one appointment, it just rotates, it's five members that just rotates. And that, then there's a joint appointment. And what, what had ended up happening, the reason that, yeah, the, the issue that we're trying to clean up is. Nobody was really keeping track, who was pointing what way and, so we ended up with uh uh. Two people that were going to expire at the same time. Um and that's what, what they're trying to do is straighten it up to where. It falls along those lines and we don't have another issue. We've got somebody who may or may not have been appointed for something.
So let's just fix what the problem is and not try to do other things to it while we're at it. So, right, I mean, we're just needing to fix the timing, I get it, we need to do that, so let me fix that, but.
And that's good that they're gonna get track of that stuff and on it, because they, quite honestly, in the last. There's a lot of stuff going on over there, but they have cleaned their act up, and they've got a lawyer that's making them. If you, if you went to a library meeting two years ago or three years ago, and they go to one now, they are. Way better than they used to. It's, it's getting better.
So basically, what I'm hearing is.
I don't think we need an interview committee.
When it's county's turn, the county wants to do that, they can, they can collect the applications and submit them, but the county will be.
Yep. And they still communicate with us when they appoint somebody, correct?
When the town, when the town.
Yeah, the, the, the town has, and this is, everybody's supposed to communicate with everybody on this. The town, you know, really, they can appoint who they want to when it's nursery, and we can appoint who we want to. We have to collaborate with them.
They have a really good library, they did a good job, we just need to keep it.
Just keep it going that way. So, I'll do that. Um and they built the appointment timelines, which I think is probably appropriate. And then the removal trustee, they can be removed by the appointing authority at a public meeting by resolution. For cause, defined in the bylaw.
So one more time, so we can, so the county could remove their.
The appointing authority is, well. Cause I even read it as the appointing authorities, the, the county for the ones that the county appoints, the town for the ones in the town.
Could remove, is, so could remove them if they were the ones that appointed them and weren't satisfied or whatever.
Remove for cause, and the, and the, and the cause would be um. Either for cause of the bylaws, you know, if they're doing something improper. We can say, if unexcused absence has occurred, means that they're just kinda abandoned. A recommendation of the majority of the district board, resolution, probably don't want that revealed. And then um.
Well, listen again, would you do?
A recommendation of the majority of the district board, form of resolution.
So a removal of a trustee, order to remove a board member, they would just have to vote on it.
Yeah, I don't like that one there.
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, so I think we, we say that we're not. And then violation of library laws, bylaws, policies. And by the majority of the district board, I think that would be the appointment authority. And that, I do think that, that you should be able to remove for those violations, but I think a lot of people. They think refer it to the, uh, uh, appointment authority, and you guys here, or, you know, your successors. Is a, a decision.
Right.
And then uh possible eligibility, things.
Yeah.
So I will uh let them know that we don't want an interview committee for, for any of the uh, the county appointees. The county wants to continue to do it, we believe that's a, a point that they keep. You know, on timelines, they, they do, that they submit the applications to the county determination. And we, they'll need a, the interview committee in that situation. And then, then the removal of trustees, the uh, the recommendations, majority of the district board. Um and the form of resolution. Well, that, that says trustees may be removed by the appointing authority of public resolution, yeah. So I guess the, the district board would recommend that a removal, and it would be still be at the appointing authority. I think that is still okay. And then, but I do think that the violation would be another recommendation of the district board, and that's up to the authority for that determination.
Yeah, that's good.
I will, I will write them back a letter. Everything else sounds okay, though?
I think so, so then we'll get that letter or agreement to look at ahead of time.
Yes, we've got that agreement, it's gotta be in form of an MOU. I think what I'll do is I'll, I'll write them and uh indicate that, you know, I've went through the term sheet. With you in a, in a work session, and these are areas you have concern in this. Would like to see change.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Um moving on to county administrator update.
Um so things slowed down just dramatically, at least when we got our recovery manager position advertised. Um the two that we've got um were kind of. Out of the ballpark in a couple of different ways, so we've republished that in the Arrow Times. And Hallie remind me, when is our twenty first? I think the bids are due on the twenty fourth, I hope. Um so we're hoping for maybe some more local expertise in that. Um one of the things, I was talking with uh Danielle Aguilera um from CDPHE. CDH, uh ZM, CDH, yeah.
One of those.
Yeah, whatever emergency management is, and so she gave me a book, um a notebook about the duties that the county's responsible for. When appointing an emergency manager or a recovery manager, there's a lot of different programs in there, there's some. Um different things that we need to take a look at, um so it was a very interesting read, I'm about five pages from the end of it. We actually have um a meeting scheduled coming up where we'll kind of go over the. Um incident itself and say what worked well, what didn't work well, um how would we improve this in the future? You know, what do we need to change, document, those kinds of things, so everything from, it could be from making sure that food was available for. People, where we met, was it comfortable? Um the, we had a, a problem with the salamander machine, which was the ID tag, we actually have two of them sitting in here. But they didn't have the most current um software, so the state brought one in, well, those are things that. We need to make sure that we have on hand. So the other thing in there, it says, keep in mind, just because you've had an emergency, and the emergency has passed. You're working through that as recovery, but doesn't mean that you can't have another emergency on the heels of that emergency. So to be prepared, so of course, we're gonna be looking at additional uh possible flooding. Debris flows, damage, stuff like that. Um but then depending on what our winter looks like and our spring runoff. We could be back in the same position with fires, and so. Having gone through this now, I think we all, it's very fresh in our mind that we look at those policies and procedures and say, you know, did. What does that EOC need to look like in the future? You know, how did we handle this? And maybe it was overkill, and maybe it wasn't. Um so anyways, it was, it's really a um interesting read, there's some courses that I'll probably. Look at in first of the year, uh if we get a recovery manager, um you know, that's something that would work very closely with the emergency manager. They are two separate distinct jobs, but there's some carryover between the two. So um hoping that we'll get some good applicants.
So Vicky, in some of the other counties where they have a full-time. Emergency manager on staff, does that person do the recovery management if?
According to the book, no.
Okay, that's I was.
They, they were very clear about the different, it's a totally different need set.
Okay, that makes sense.
But now maybe some do, um it depends on what their, your. Emergency manager needs to rise to the occasion very quickly, make sure that you're, you're doing things to prevent an emergency from happening. You know, you're, you know, removing dead trees and you're, you're making sure that the, you know, floodways. Look clean and all those kinds of things, that's more the emergency management planning for the disaster. Once the disaster's in full swing, they take over, they're getting the resources, but then once that disaster has been mitigated, the fire's out. Then really their job is to step back and start making sure that their.
The next one does.
The next one isn't gonna hit you, where your recovery manager's working on that longer term process of saying, how do I fix? You today, how, how, how do we fix this problem and this problem that's not. Yeah, so it did look like there was two, and the other thing is that recovery manager should be much more of a grant oriented. Um moving funds, following procedures, grant administration type thing where the recovery, the. Emergency manager isn't, his job is really to work with the state in the situation immediately resolved. Now, there is a lot of passover, there, there's some, you know, cross back and forth, that those two would need to work very closely, so. Anyways, great book, I will get it to you guys as you are the board, um you are responsible. So the bottom line, it actually ends with the chairman, so and the other thing that it always points out was disasters start local. And they end local, so you may get some help in the middle, but ultimately, it is your responsibility. It's your disaster, you own it. So that was interesting, so um now focused on the budget, finally getting to get some good work, I've got, I think I've got about twelve piles left. Of information to still get into the budget, into clear graph, uh make sure things tie out. One of the big ones still left to tie out is gonna be um fleet. Uh we made some significant changes, um where people said, no, I just don't drive that much, and so we've been allocating. X amount, well, in, you know, part of that is, we've now reduced these expenses over here, so we need to reduce the revenue on this side. And make sure that that's still all gonna tie up well. Which is a big task when you think about the fleet, but um that being said, um working through that. Um other than that, we are success for the County Road seventy seven bridge. Let's see, what else did we have? Seems to me like they're.
Got County Road seventeen.
County Road seventeen, uh working on County Road five, uh we had a group in meeting with SEDA. Um about doing um a grant for that, um so we've got till November seventh, so Antina and I are gonna take that. And hit that one day or two, couple of days to get our grant application done this next week. That has to be in by November seventh, um they were concerned that our. You, we should have had a hundred percent scoping done by now, however, the caveat to that is. The way that they suggested is, they said, well, you could shore that up by maybe allocating more funds for that as your cost share. So instead of doing an eighty twenty cost share, maybe we back that down to a seventy thirty, or whatever that would look like. To put us in compare, in, in competition with others who may have a hundred percent of their design build and are shelf ready. But need more funding to get it done. So that was just a suggestion, so when we get down to it, we will start making those headway on that. The other issue is, we have asked SGM to do a couple different um scenarios on that. Originally, we'd ask for a full replacement structure, which came in at about two point two. Um if we just did the box culvert, say we'd go down to about two point one. We've asked them to come back and do the same thing that they did with County Road seventeen and say, okay, what if we just put a Band-Aid on it, what would that cost? What if we did like something that would last maybe five years, ten years, what would that look like and what cost would that be? What would it look like if we did a full recap, which would kick it out twenty five years? Or what if we did the full replacement, which is what, they're, they'll have the thirty percent design on November seventh for the full. Uh replacement. So once we get those figures in, um which I don't expect that before November third, I'm, I'm. Maybe they'll get those other figures to us earlier than that, but then we can kind of decide where we're at, but we're gonna go ahead and pursue the grant now. In hopes that we can get to that point, but that'll be a consideration that we'll be talking about is. Um our funding for uh in our road and bridge projects, you know, what could we allocate? If that is something you guys wanna do to say, let's make it more attractive where we beat out some other folks. Cause there's a limited pool of funds.
Right, and SEDA will only, we can only use the grant if we do the whole. Thing, we can't do a Band-Aid or a twenty year fix?
No, that is a possibility.
Oh, they will potentially?
But it has to be up to CDOT standards or rehab validation, which it won't. Uh so it'll be, you'll be spending more money, not, not, let me rephrase that, it could cost more, the actual project could cost more. Because it's CDOT, just because of their requirements.
Yes.
However, then if you consider it's an eighty twenty or seventy thirty split, where we're looking at having to pay out of pocket, we might have. You do end up saving, right, on the backside.
Yeah, but, but I don't think that CDOT would ever go for a rehab on that particular breach, it would never meet their spec.
And one of, yeah.
The, they give it to do that, yeah.
Well, and one of the biggest situations is the hundred year floodplain that we adopted in twenty twenty two. One by the FEMA um guidelines, that's now in a hundred year floodplain versus what we had done before when it was built. Was like a, you know, fifty year, a hundred, sixty six years, I think is what we have of flood data. It's never risen to that occasion, but just look if it goes to springs, I mean, you know, it can. Hundred year flood can happen.
Yeah.
So that pretty much, I think, is it for me. Um I would love to be able to get the budget closer to finalized, we still got. Several funds to go and some other information to dig in too, so working on it.
Well, you're doing good, I can see progress, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I don't know that I see it, but.
There's light at the end of the tunnel, Vicky, I'm pretty sure.
Sure, I'm pretty sure.
I keep saying that too.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Uh county commissioner updates.
I can start that off, cause I was on vacation.
Rubbing it in.
Um he still did a lot of work, I've gotta be honest with you, I still called him and texted and emailed, so.
I attended a meeting while I was on vacation, I talked to Eger a lot, and I talked to Ricky a lot, and we got left them, so.
Good job.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wouldn't say working from home, working from the lake.
Yeah, I asked him one of his meetings, if he was like, is that a screen saver, he goes, no, that's the lake, and here goes, oh, you crossed the lake.
Um, I attended an emergency management meeting, we got updates from the emergency manager. Um, attended some budget meetings, I had a meeting with Q B and Quantum over the B L M M O U. And they are going to connect me with, um. A new B L M interim director.
Yeah.
Doug.
Yeah.
Those would be, anyway, they are going to connect me with him as well as a couple of people in the Department of Interior. To talk about the M O U and how it's impacting us in Rayo Belanco County, and, um. Really, that. Where I struggle with it the most, and, and I, I. Still say this all the time, is when we have leases that are only on federal land. Why in the world is E C M C involved in our permitting, should not be happening, so. That was, um, part of our conversation in this M O U, that they were, they were heading to D C the next following week. That would have been last week, they went to D C, actually had some meetings set up to talk to some of the staff in the White House about this M O U particularly, so. It's gaining traction and momentum, we just have to keep it going, so just continue to have that conversation. Um, C C I had their first, uh, legislative priorities meeting that we voted on. Um, which ones would potentially be on the priority list, we didn't tier one them or two them yet, but we will get there, so. Um, I attended the Northwest T P R M M O F selection committee, so we have a separate selection committee. For our M M O F dollars, we will be discussing it at our meeting on Thursday. Um, City of Craig has put in for one, uh, that would connect the railways from route to the City of Craig. And so we, we wanted to have that conversation, hopefully, one of the county commissioners, uh, from Moffett County will be there. Um, because we didn't get a letter of support from them, we were just curious as to where they're at with. That piece, so we really wanted to have that kind of conversation with them, uh, we were in support of the, the grant money, but. Um, just curious as to what Moffett County's thinking, so I did text Melody and let her know that we would be having that conversation there, so hopefully somebody's there. And that's all that I have. All right, um, let's see, so been working with Carrie Brennan. Um, on the Outdoor Regional Partnership Initiative, so she held the first one of those meetings, um, that. A couple of weeks ago, and there will be one in Rangeley on the. Um, twenty-ninth. At six o'clock at the Rangeley District Hospital. So want to encourage anybody and everybody there, so that is the, um, program that is really focused on. Um, conservation, agriculture, and outdoor recreation, um, that we kind of pulled back from the state folks. So Carrie is function, running with that and making good progress, um. Been dealing with budget stuff, continuing to br- um, visit with Vicki, um.
And Lisa.
And Lisa, yes, Lisa's done a very good job of helping me understand things the last few days here, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, let's see, met with Congressman Hurd, um, as well as with the, the landowners and Congressman Hurd. Uh, Vicki and I actually met with almost, I think, all of the different departments, um, as thank yous. Um, two weeks ago, I think that was, um. I would like to still catch up with the maintenance folks, I haven't got to connect with them, so I don't know how, and anybody else that we missed, I don't know how we do a catch-all deal. Um, then, um, attended the Colorado River District Water Meeting in Grand Junction, I think that was last Friday. Um, there are really a lot of conversations about the Colorado River Interim, uh, or the Operations Agreement. They have, the Bureau of Reclamation has given the states, the seven states until November seventh or seventeenth. To, they don't have to have an agreement, but they've got to have a, uh, a kind of an outline of how they're going to come to that final agreement, it looks like. Um, without that, the Bureau of Reclamation is just going to say, this is how we're going to do it, and there is some concern that that could happen. Um, I do have the opportunity to talk, to talk to the Bureau of Rec- Acting Director, um. Uh, next, actually tomorrow, I think it is, um, so I'm looking forward to that to kind of get a feel, because this. I think this is the guy who was working for. Uh, within one of the states in the lower basin, so there's been some concern about how he would.
That's what I would.
Uh, weigh out on those decisions, so I'm looking forward to hearing that conversation, so I've had the chance through my, um. I sit on the Colorado Cattlemen's Water Committee, and I've had, as their chair, and I've had the chance to kind of get involved pretty heavily in some of those conversations. Um, the other thing that I do want to spend a little bit of time on, because it's come to my attention. That there's some misinformation or confusion in the community about FEMA and what that looks like. Um, so, yes, the county staff spent the first month after the fire pulling all that information together. Um, so that we could get it to the state and this governor could send the letter to the president requesting. Um, emergency declaration, which opens us up for FEMA money at that point, right, is that right?
Some FEMA funding.
Yes, for public assistance, and public assistance is not the general public assistance, and I think that's where people get confused. What that means is it's for government entities or nonprofit, uh, utilities. So our big push is because White River Electric and one other. The Tri-State has about twenty-seven million dollars of damage. So that is the primary push, we have, really, really, really need FEMA for that reason. FEMA will only help the county on issues that happened from August fourth to August twenty-nine.
Nine, yeah.
Um, that is fire, and then only two days of flooding that happened in that period of time. So, we, if we get the designation, we will then, as the county, evaluate. The pros and cons of using FEMA, because there will be strings attached. So I just want to be very careful with that, um, FEMA will not do anything to help individuals or businesses, unfortunately. And I don't know the criteria that it had to meet to be able to do that, but we didn't lose a bunch of homes that, or businesses, and that's where. Individual FEMA would kick in. So, that piece, then we are working with N R C S on the E W P. Um, Emergency Watershed Protection Program. And we should get in agreement with them in the near future, and they will help us cover up to seventy-five percent. Of a lot of the impacts to the roads for the county, again, um, for the roads, so whether it's clearing roads, it's, um, bridges, it, um. Not, um, and culverts and so forth, and they will help us work on stabilizing the watershed above that. Is, is a big piece of the goal. Right now, the Conservation District is working with them on the exigent, which meaning the very. Most critical emergency homes, basically, so there's five or six, I think roughly, homeowners, landowners. That are sitting ducks for flooding, and so they are helping them. And those projects have to be in actually by, what'd you say, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, somewhere in that, of this month. So, once they get that done.
Twenty-fourth.
You're right, once they get that done, then they, we will, we as the county will start working with them more closely for the longer-term projects. If there are landowners that need assistance in there, we will be able to help them to, we will have that agreement in there, so. Um, that is the E W P. Then, because, um, I was feeling like Vicki really needed a little bit of break about worrying about this stuff and to do budget. I worked with the, um, Office of Emergency Management and got a letter drafted that, um, if it hasn't went, will soon, that will come in and match. So the seventy-five percent E W P. I think we will get roughly twelve and a half percent from the state. To help pay for things is the goal there, they just say a portion of the twenty-five percent, so that is our goal, so that's been. Kind of what my life has been the last month.
I'm telling you, you forgot about the S B A.
Oh, and especially, yes, so, thank you, and that is, um, Sarah with the, uh, chamber. Harley with the town, and, um, Caitlin with the bank, has been our committee that's working on that. We do need, um, a, a minimum of five businesses that have been impacted. By the fire slash floods, fire, I think it has to be, yeah, um. We need them to fill out, um, forms that Sarah has, and they're a very short, brief form. We have to have five qualified ones and submitted to, um, small business associate, uh.
S B A.
B A.
Administration.
Administration. So that it opens up funding for any business that has been impacted. Um, without those, there is no S B A loans, and it's only going to be loans. Um, how many people will utilize it, I don't know, but we don't want to miss that opportunity if there is somebody out there that could do it. Um, and thank you to those three ladies very much for working on that, because that's all, um, a volunteer side of things to help with that, so, um.
And the last, just to kind of echo that, that originally they wanted us to get ten, um, surveys, basically where someone has to provide their economic data. They have to get kind of, fund, it doesn't, it's not for big companies like natural soda or, you know, the energy companies, it is small businesses. They asked for ten of those, so far we've collected three.
Only got three, yeah.
Um, but the reason why is we have to have at least five that are verifiable, where they come back and they say, yes, this is truly a small business, if they were truly impacted. Yep, these are things that could be addressed by an S B A loan, and then we get the S B A, then basically if that funding opens up. Then those same people or others can apply for an S B A loan at a lower interest rate, so it would be of, uh, you know, they still have to meet the minimum criteria. Of cash flow, creditworthiness, collateral, all those kinds of things, but the interest rate would be set lower, um, yeah.
So, all of that, um. I think that was most of the couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, you will adjourn at one oh four, thanks, everybody.